Good evening, Garden City. I'd like to call to order a regular city council meeting for Monday, November 28th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. First order of business is our opening ceremony, which will include the National Anthem, Pledge of Allegiance, and a moment of silence for those veterans or service members that have given their life. Would everyone please rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Mr. Miller, will you take the roll call?
Mayor Jacobs.
Here.
Mayor Proton Gold.
Present.
President.
Councilmember Carefotis.
Here.
Councilmember Squires.
Here.
Councilmember DeMichael.
Here.
Councilmember Earl.
Here.
Councilmember Witt.
Here.
Do you have a form? All seven members present.
Thank you. Looking for approval of the agenda. Mr. Miller, first.
Yes, the agenda that is before you this evening, I would like to have it approved. We had a few changes to include Action Item B4, to include ordinance review committee, and then under other business, we removed animal control off the surface.
Okay, motion is in order.
Mayor.
Councilwoman DeMichael.
I move to approve the agenda as below for the revised as of November 28th, 2022, from Monday at 7:00 PM. Support.
Support from Councilmember Squires. Any further comment from table? Public? All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? So pass. We have no recognitions. I don't see any state or county officials, no presentations. Under community events, I do have Kim Marquette wanted me to pass along that starting this Saturday at the Historical Museum, they are going to have over 250 nativities. They will be on display Wednesdays and Saturdays from noon to 3:00 PM, and it's free. And again, that's at the Historical Museum. None of that. Item nine, petitions and communications. Shred day update. Mr. Miller.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I just want to give a real quick update about shred day that happened on the 5th of November. It was a big success. I included 222 vehicles that went through for shedding, for shredding. Sorry. But they did shed 400 pounds of food for the food pantry. So that was wonderful. Collected over $150 just in cash donations for the pantry, and then it included staff and a number of volunteers. I did want to thank Jade Hunter, Grace Purwin, Tristan Young, and Lauren Lynch, all volunteered that morning to help get the cars to the road as quick as possible. So it was a good event and really helped the food pantry.
Thank you. Sounds great. Public hearings. We're going to talk about the 2022 Sidewalk Program Special Assessment, and Mr. Omen and Mr. Bucelli, if you'd like to come up?
Good evening, Mayor and council. We conducted our annual sidewalk program this summer. The area of this year's program was the southeast part of the city, Middlebelt to Inxter, Ford Road to Cherry Hill, excluding last year's area that was Harrison to Inxter, Ford Road to Marquette. We covered a bigger area this year than we've had in the past. We would like to get on a citywide six-year rotation. Our aim was to address trip hazards greater than one inch. JB Contractors of Detroit was our contractor for the program. They started about the first week in June and finished the first week in October. They did a nice job with us, for us with quality work. There were 540 properties addressed during the program. I think if you drive this neighborhood, you can see the difference this program has made for pedestrian, traffic safety, and the improvement in the general appearance of the neighborhood.
This is to approve the assessment role for the program? Thank you. Anyone wishing, anyone wishing to speak on the special assessment? This is just for the sidewalks? Nobody? One more time, anybody? Yes, sir. Come on up to the podium and state your name, please.
Name is Jeffrey Greer, resident in the area where the sub sidewalk campaign resided. I got a notice from the city that they plan to automatically put this on a tax assessment in February next year. I wish to pay the full amount when due, not have it assessed. Nothing was talked about that. I talked with Brad Omen about a month ago. Never got a number back on the assessment, so I'm here to find out for sure what do I owe and how do I go about paying it in full.
Mr. Miller, you can...
If at least it's needed, we'll make sure that will be the total amount and cover the payment here at the city.
Okay. If you can come up and, there's some forms in the... Okay, anybody else? All right, I'll close the public hearing. Item 11, items for the consent agenda.
Mayor.
Councilmember DeMichael.
I move to approve the items for the consent agenda, items A1 through 5, and then 5A and B.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Earl. Any comments from the table? Any comments from the general public? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 7-0. Okay, action items. We'll talk Special Assessment Resolution Number 5, 2022 Sidewalk Program, subject of our public hearing.
Mayor.
Councilmember Squires.
I move to approve the attached resolution confirming Special Assessment Role Number 4238 for the 2022 Sidewalk Program.
Support.
Support from Councilmember DeMichael. Any more comments from the table? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 7-0. Okay, item number two, city hall vehicle purchase. What this is, is this is a vehicle, 2023 GMC Terrain. What we would do right now for meetings, going back and forth to different buildings, especially election time, conferences, the only vehicle we have around here that's not a, that's not personal is a F-250, which is not real cost efficient in any, any way, shape, or form, especially with gas. So what the administration has proposed is to purchase a vehicle that will, will save on mileage, gas, whatever that we, we supplement when the people go to conferences and that. And that's what we have.
Mayor.
Councilwoman DeMichael.
I move to authorize the city treasurer to execute the necessary agreements to purchase one 2023 GMC Terrain SLE AWD vehicle at the Michigan State bid price of $28,258.33 from Todd Wenzel Buick GMC.
Mayor?
Yes.
Do we comment on this before or wait for some, after support?
Looking for a second.
I support.
Support from Councilmember Witt. Okay, council, comments from council?
Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman Carefotis.
I don't, I just have a problem with buying a vehicle as an errand to run errands or to go to meetings. Ford Motor Company doesn't have cars for people to run to meetings. Every place I've ever worked, when someone goes to a meeting, you pay their mileage or their assessment on their car. It's $20,000. We don't have money for a grant writer, an economic developer, or animal control, but we have $20,000 to spend on a car to run errands. I just, I don't agree.
Any more comments?
Mayor.
Councilmember Earl.
Anytime that I've gone to training, I paid for, I used my own vehicle. So I, I'm confused as to the use of this vehicle, you know, and necessity of it at this point.
Mr. Dackerty?
Oh, Clark, do you want to talk a little more about what your usage is on a regular basis? It's not for meetings, car. It's running to the bank and some other errands and...
It says for meetings right on.
It's one of the options, yeah. But it's not the only thing we use it for.
We could put it in the budget last year in the purchases of the local floor. All the city helps use it. Part of it, part of it would be going to meetings, of course, but we do go out in the city often. I get called out on almost daily basis going out, looking at building department issues. Also, the assessor will be going out. They go out in their own vehicles. It would be good to have a Garden City vehicle out when the assessor's out doing assessing. We have WCA data do use their own vehicle, but certain employees would use a city vehicle to go out, especially sometimes they're measuring additions to structures. They're measuring lots, things like that. They could have a badge on, but also it'd be helpful to have a city vehicle with them. We're sending people out to go in the field, and almost all city departments have vehicles. City Hall doesn't do their job.
Currently, we use the big truck.
Mayor.
Yes.
I do want to state that it was budgeted for, for our fiscal year, so we knew that this was coming when we did our budget. And to save money on the F-250 with gas and everything else, it makes sense for this to happen. Also, it will save on man-hours in reference to doing the mileage and the reporting and then doing those checks. So it'll save in the long run everything else that we have to put into it. That's why I'm supporting this.
Mayor?
Councilmember...
I also contacted a couple other cities like Westland, who's much larger than us, with a much larger staff. They don't have any vehicle like that, that their staff uses to, those kind of things. I just don't think it's very common. Still, again, I don't support it.
Councilmember Squires.
We did put it in the budget last year, so I don't have a problem with it at all.
Mayor?
Mayor Proton Gold.
Reading through this, I don't, right now, sitting here, I don't think that, that there is a need for it. I would like to actually see us slow down a little bit on the money that we've been spending and kind of take a look at things. I understand if it was in the budget and it was approved, but we weren't part of approving that budget at the time. So I would just like more time to, to look at things that are going to cost us some money and look at the fact that we, we spend this money. We also have the insurance, and where's the breakdown that's showing me how much we're spending on mileage reimbursement and things along that line? When are we going to break even on this vehicle? And will that vehicle have seen its end of life at that point?
Mayor.
Councilmember Earl.
I could say that I, I, I just need some more information. I don't necessarily, I'm not necessarily against it. I think it's good for us to have a vehicle. You know, I have seen in other areas where people have to use their own personal vehicle, they get into an accident, and it's a big mess for the, for the municipality. So it'd be good to have a vehicle. I'm just looking for a little bit more information in the costs. So I don't know if we can just table this till, till next Monday, but I'm not necessarily opposed to it.
I'm okay with tabling.
Mr. Miller.
I support.
Well, there's a motion on the table with a second, so...
A second.
...goes forward or...
I second it.
No, no, no.
No.
To purchase, but they, can't they motion, can they...
The motion maker has to agree to make a change, and the second is supportive also.
Just to clarify, the ones that are, you just want additional information, and we're just going to table this until the next meeting. I just don't want to get in the habit of tabling everything for future meetings, because that's just my concern.
We want more information.
So...
Yeah, and when we get our council packet...
It'll be back on the agenda at the...
With the next meeting. That's my concern, right? Because we got, we got our packets on Thursday. So any of those questions that arise, if I ever have additional questions, I always try to get that, those questions answered ahead of time. So I'm okay with amending this motion to table this until the next council meeting.
I second.
Any, any comments from the general public?
I just had a quick question that I would like to know. I don't, I don't know if anybody has any kind of plan for this. What if multiple people need to use it at the same time? I understand the idea of saying why we would need a vehicle. I understand the frustration at having to drive your own vehicle places, but like, what if you end up with two people needing a vehicle at the same time? Would we just end up having somebody having to use their own vehicle anyway? In which case, it, it just kind of seems like that negates the argument of the, we're trying to cut down on the man-hours for it. So I was just curious what would happen if more than one person needed it? Or, I don't work in city hall, maybe that doesn't come up often enough and it's not really relevant, but it was just something that I was wondering.
I would, I would think that would be coming up in our informational packet, and we'll, next week, we could probably give you that answer. Any other comments? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I guess similar to...
Come on up to the podium, please.
I work for a pretty big company. We use our personal vehicles for transportation to and from. We pay mileage. If we get... Bonnie Talaga. So we use our personal vehicles. If we get in an accident, it's our insurance. It doesn't go back to the company. So I don't quite understand the reason for having a vehicle to go to sites. We go to site visits all the time with our personal vehicles. I mean, I don't quite get the need, let alone a brand-new vehicle. There's used ones out there that might be better suited.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hunt.
As Councilmember Earl stated earlier, the insurance end of this, you have an employee hops in their own vehicle, doesn't necessarily mean they have insurance on their vehicle at the time. If one of the employees gets in their own vehicle and takes someone else along with them, we're going to be in a world of hurt. If you have a vehicle that you're getting reimbursed on, you are supposed to have a rider on that policy to cover it during work time. And if somebody gets hurt out there, it's going to be one big mess on our hands. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, the motion on the floor is to table this for, till next meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passes 7-0. Okay, item three, the creation of adult-use marijuana ordinance. And what, what this is, is just to have an ordinance in place if we decide to go forward with it in the future. We've heard from a couple different attorneys, and we don't have an ordinance, and we haven't opted in yet. So what this ordinance would do is we would send it over to the attorneys, have them look it over, make sure everything's good, and then we would proceed. If we wanted to go, we would go to the planning commission, and then come back to us, and, and we discuss it some more and see if we were going to go, go further with it. So this is just to create adult-use marijuana ordinance.
May?
Go ahead, Councilmember Squires.
Yeah, I have talked with quite a few residents that are against us opting in, and I feel that, you know, I have to say, they don't want to open it up. They really don't, because this will include the sales too, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, and so I think, go ahead.
I was going to say, what, what it's doing right now is just mirroring what we have for the medical. As far as anyone that opened, they would have to grow, process, and dispense.
And dispense, okay.
So they would have to do all three.
And it would open up to multiple licenses?
Multiple places in the industrial zone. So it would, it would, it would mirror what the medical ordinance says, only it would be unlimited in the industrial area, which is a limited space. It would also, again, it's, it's just getting an ordinance in case we do opt in. Now, I would say that at the last, not the last election, but when we voted on it, it was almost two to one that the residents wanted it. So I guess it depends on which residents, but it did pass 6,000 to 3,000 or give or...
You mean in the state?
No, in the city.
In the city, okay.
In the city.
Well, I'm not going to support it.
Okay.
Okay, I hope, somebody has to stand up for them. Thank you.
Is there a motion? Okay, does not, that one fails. Okay, going on to, there is no other business?
Wait, someone has a question.
Oh.
There's no motion, there's no motion. It'll be done during the public comment.
Okay.
What, in the public comments?
During public...
During public comments, you, you can speak. Which is right now. We are, item thirteen. Which is item thirteen, public comment.
Ordinance review.
Mayor, just skip over that one.
Oh.
Announce it.
Item four, the ordinance review committee. It, it's on here, so we have to ta, if we can vote to table it.
They have it at the table?
No.
City clerk will just officially. You should table that if we're going to address it again at a future meeting.
Mayor.
Councilmember Earl.
I move to table action item number four, ordinance review committee.
Support from Councilmember Carafotas. Comments from table? From general public. Well, this is on the ordinance review committee.
Okay, I'm sorry, that happened so quickly. When are we tabling this till now?
It's future meeting.
Just a future meeting?
Yes.
Thank you, Councilmember Earl.
Okay, all, all in favor of tableing it?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass a seven-zero. Okay, item thirteen, public comments. Anybody?
Okay, my name is Helen Bobby. I have no idea what you're talking about, for or against. I don't want it, I do want it. I don't know what, what you're aiming at with your, the creation of this ordinance. It's not clear. You're just saying, I don't want it, and other people are saying, well, I don't know. Didn't we vote for it already? So, can you clarify?
Yes, I will. So what we have on, on the books right now is medical marijuana is allowed in the industrial area. Only up to three facilities. They must grow, process, to be able to dispense. So they can't just open up a building and, and sell, just sell it. This ordinance was going to be for the adult use, which is twenty-one and older group, and.
Beyond medical.
Beyond medical, correct.
Got it.
Medical is under twenty-one, actually eighteen, eighteen and, under twenty-one. So this would, would have allowed them to open, or at least set an ordinance similar to the medical one. That could have been done in the industrial area. So council chose not to, to move on it.
Okay, so is.
This is for the public comment.
Yeah, it's just for.
We got a comment, we could take that, or if you wanted more information, you could give me their name and their name and number, and we could contact you with that information.
Okay, because I want to know how it variant, varies from state law. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there a, Mr. Jim Patterson?
Honorable Mayor, Council, it's nice meeting you. The only one I recognize is Pat Squire. She's been around a few years. And some of my comments go way back to previous administrations regarding roads. And what I've done is gone and typed out a list that I'd like to just read off to you, so that I don't get off on a tangent or in the left field. My name is Jim Patterson. I reside at 31551 James Street. I've been a resident for fifty-three years. So I've seen a lot of discussions on roads in that amount of time. I wrote a letter dated October twenty-third. We were going to present that at the last meeting, and I happened to know it's big. That's when everybody's getting sworn in and that, and I didn't want to spoil the party. So the letter, I believe you have in your files, according to the clerk. And it was signed by me, written by me, and endorsed by ten other residents. We're all very unhappy with that one section of James Street. It's bumpy. What's happening is the road is taking the curvature of the potholes and all the damage that was done before, and it's very rough. You should, you'll have to take a ride. So I'll start. My questions regarding the letter is, will concrete pavement with curbs, gutters, and sewer updates be provided? Or was, or has blacktop and cape seal been voted on and approved by the voters to replace that? That was back in the eighties, I believe, that the council adopted the road construction. If I'm wrong about that, please correct me. Cape seal is for extending the life of roadway surfaces for a period of time that are in fair and good condition. A smooth road and moderate-sized cracks is defined as fair to good condition. In the letter that I presented, or I also gave the clerk a list of what I was going to be discussing tonight, which I've changed the format, you'll notice. But I believe there was an attachment there showing what cape seal construction should be. James Avenue between Merriman and Moller was not in good or fair condition prior to cape sealing. The roadway had potholes and broken asphalt. Asphalt similar to James Avenue between Moller and Hubbard should have been provided between Merriman and Moller. Garden City two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-two roadmap indicates streets from Warren South to Block Avenue between Merriman and Hubbard are provided with cape seal construction, except for five blocks in that area. The five blocks are one on James, two on Bridge, and two on Craig. Pardon me?
Please hand your comments. There's a three-minute time limit. You're extending your on-pass. Are these both, are these both things?
Everybody has, I'll leave a copy of this, and, well, no, this is a little different than what I give you. What I'd like to do is just hang that. I feel that the cape seal for Garden City streets was wrong application to begin with. The one condition that I'm particularly worried about right now is on Moller. Now, I'll say cape seal that, that is terrible, because I, I don't know how many of you have driven Moller from Warren South to Hubbard. But the area right at James Street is a mess, and cape seal will not hold up. I walk Bridge and I walk Rush Street. Those streets have been done with cape seal. They are cracked. They're going to take on water. They will probably expand when it freezes. And we're right back in the same shape as we were forty years ago. We're still talking about.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Fixing the roads.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening. Sandy Abraham from Towers Across the Street. I'd just like to thank the council so much for installing the automatic door opener on the police station. I worked the elections, and we had a lot of people coming over there with walkers and scooters, and it was really helped them so, so very much. And I want to thank the council for taking care of that.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Kathy Ripken. I know most of you, but I have a quick question, because I didn't understand what happened before with bringing up the vote. So does that mean that it's done? Case, which is, can you, I didn't understand that. Can someone explain?
Mayor.
It can, if I'm not mistaken.
Because I heard six thousand people want it.
It could be brought up again, if somebody wants to bring it up.
Mayor, I, I tried to, to read the motion when you said it, but I couldn't say it fast enough, and I just had the paper together, and then you went on to the next thing. So if we bring it up again, I would, I would support it, or make the motion.
Can we do that in her, in her comments at the end?
Another meeting or?
We could, mayor, we could put it on the agenda for Monday, so we only have five, seven days, so.
Okay, we'll put, it'll be on the agenda Monday.
Okay, I, I appreciate that, because I want you to know, you know, I told you about our issues with DTE. We've, we did finally get the trans.
I saw it.
Yeah, we, oh, you saw it. And so we finally got that up and going, but at this point, we are now over ten million dollars into this project. And we cannot open and stay open if we're medical. We just can't at this point because of what's happened, unfortunately, with the industry. Because we have so much committed, and we are, it's going to take us years to pay back what we've already put in. And we will lose at least fifty thousand a month, they told us, if we don't. So I just wanted you to know that we really want to open up and we want to succeed, but it's going to put us in a real bind. So we hope, again, you know, we would be, our place alone could make over fifty-five thousand dollars, you know, a year in taxes just for you, which would help a lot with money, let alone the other locations. And I love the fact that it's just going to be in the industrial area. I get that. But I do know a lot of people are for it, and we'd love to keep working with the city on this, so please, you know. And again, then we also boost the age up to twenty-one, as opposed where it's at eighteen-year-olds can come in. And I think personally it'd be nice to stop it, make it twenty-one or older. That would be a good thing. So I just wanted to bring that up again, and I just hope it's something that people will talk about and have questions. Again, now that we're up and going, we are willing to take people through, too, now that we have power. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other public, Mr. Hunt?
Two items tonight with the new mayor and council here. I would just hope that the lawsuit that we have with the library continues, that it doesn't get swept under a rug somewhere. We, as taxpayers, pay for that in our taxes one time, then they turn around and not pay their bills. We're supposed to pay for it a second time. That amount of money would have went real nice to help out a lot of other items. Maybe partial pay to another police officer, maybe our animal control that it's being brought up, a firefighter, something like that. But we, as taxpayers, have already paid for that library once. They need to pay their bills, and we need to keep that going. And secondly, we have council member that has a financial responsibility and has sworn to uphold everything that goes on in the city and sits on information for two to three months, doesn't even bring it before a council, and I think that needs to be addressed and looked into. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Yes, sir. Mr. Moller.
I just want to say something about marijuana thing. I heard you say unlimited number of places over there in the industrial park. On the medical, you had three. Why do you have to make it unlimited and flood the place with shacks and buildings? That'll probably, half of them will be closed up, and you'll be stuck with a bunch of empty buildings. Why can't you do the same thing with the recreational that you do with, with the medical and only have three? I don't know why you need ten or fifteen or whatever winds up. It doesn't take much to sell marijuana. You can sell that out of a trailer over there. I mean, if you're not growing it, you're not processing it, you're just bringing it in, you're selling it. So you don't need unlimited.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, city managers report.
Thank you, Mayor. I received Mr. Patterson's information. I tried to email over to you to contact me. We can talk either right after the meeting, or if we get your information, we could talk a little more about the cape seal and the process. Just a couple of few things to remind everyone, December fifteenth is the Santa ride around the city. Starting at six-thirty, there'll be more advertising put out through our city sites. December fifteenth is the glimpse of Santa throughout the community. December sixteenth is the ending of two things, is the Santa mailbox. So anybody that's dropping letters off for Santa Claus is December sixteenth. It's open right now in City Hall. There is this mailbox for Santa, if you want to drop letters off and receive a response. But December sixteenth, the last day, is the big guy gets ready for his Christmas Day. December sixteenth also is the last day for entering your house, if you like to be considered for the holiday competition, for decorating your house, lights and such. You'll see it in the water bill. It's also on our city website, talking about each of these programs. So, but December fifteenth, hit the streets as Santa makes his way around town. That's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Earl.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to answer the one question about the limited versus unlimited, this, it was a technical term from the attorney. You can limit it by putting it in a certain area where it cannot go anywhere else, but it's called unlimited, because then you can't restrict the number of licenses, and you can't be sued for that. Although, there's only room for five buildings, so it's technically limited, but it's unlimited. It was just a way to avoid a lawsuit on how, on picking and choosing who gets buildings. The, three things for you. On this Saturday, at the Garden City High School, from ten AM to three PM, is the Garden City Craft and Vendor Show. And it helps to support the Garden City Theater Program. The Garden City Theater Program is going to put on a Christmas carol Friday, December sixteenth at seven PM. Saturday, December seventeenth at two PM and seven PM, and then Sunday, December eighteenth at two PM. Tickets are online right now. It looks like it's going to be a great production. And finally, December first, which is this Thursday, at the Garden City Cafe. I will be guest bartending for the Firehouse Public Safety Foundation. It's a foundation that has provided Garden City with a little over thirty thousand dollars and donated. They provide lifesaving equipment to first responders across the country. They've actually provided seventy-one million dollars in lifesaving equipment to first responders throughout the country. Garden City has, has received some of that, and they can put in for more. So I will be there. Obviously, my looks and my skill will not get any tips, but I hope the fact that we're supporting a great cause, all the tips and donations will go to the Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation. So hopefully, some people will show up. It'll be from six to ten. And, you know, I, I'm sure Tony won't let me do very much, so. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Carafotas.
I asked at the October twenty-fourth meeting if any of our current staff had attended the grant writing workshops offered through our membership with SEMCOG. Did we find out if anybody did that?
No, in the past, our HR director went, and she gave me a synopsis on what it entailed. Basically, it wasn't a whole lot. We're looking to move forward. We received bids, or three applications for the full-time gig, and they, they came in very high. One's Grand Rapids, one was in Atlanta, and one was Rhode Island, I believe. So we're looking to move forward and putting out for a part-time employee here in the community to try to find someone who's. Part of the big issues with grants is not necessarily trying to get them, it's the managing afterward. And that was our concern about these outside the state people. They say, here's a grant, good luck. Well, then, the staff has to take it and run with it, depending on how much money it is. So having somebody in-house that's more connected with us would be better decision, so.
Okay.
We're coming back with that for sure.
Okay, good. And then with new committee members being appointed tonight by the new mayor, I want to make sure that we have protocols in place that the new appointees are signed up for continuing education right away, so we can provide them with the skills they need. I know that, yep, I know that council is, but I mean the appointees for the, the boards that our mayor appointed. So, excuse me, I want to make sure that we're doing that. The Sand Land Parade was a staple of Garden City, and I love it. It's one of my favorite days. It was a great day. So I just want to say thanks to everybody that was part of that parade, including Kevin Kremis, and everybody else that worked very hard all during the year to make that parade happen, because it's really a, a great day in our town, and, and everybody appreciates that parade. I also wanted to remind everybody that Lucky Dog is having the People and Pet Food and Clothing Drive, and that's until December sixteenth. We have a pod parked in the parking lot, and we're filling it with food for our local food banks at Radcliffe and the local church. We're collecting supplies and food for the homeless also. So for some reason, we had people that went to the stores to get supplies. The Dollar Shores and stuff were saying that they're low on all those things, like hats and gloves and scarves, because people are hurting for money, and everybody's buying it all up. So we still need those things. If anybody would like to donate, you can stop. stop at any time.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Squires.
I have nothing tonight except thank you to those who came up to speak, and we will try and get everything resolved, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protam Dol.
I have a couple of things, first, I wanted to let everyone know that the Downtown Development Authority has removed about a dozen streetlights from downtown, so if you've noticed, some of them missing, they'll be working on actually getting those replaced come spring, we had some issues with them, so there, it was a little dark at the tree lighting tonight, but when you all leave tonight, you're gonna see how beautiful it is out there with all the, all the trees are lit now, we had our tree lighting earlier, it went very well. I want to, let's see, the Garden City Kiwanis Club is hosting kids with Santa this Saturday at Barson's Greenhouse, that's gonna be from 12 to 3, and any kids elementary age are welcome to come and see Santa and have a good time there, I wanted to extend my condolences though to the family of Millie Tiskowitz, Millie was, I met Millie through Kiwanis, and her loss is, I'm sure, being felt very deeply throughout the community, she was very involved in a lot of things, so we're gonna miss Millie, and finally, I just want to let everybody know that if you want to get ahold of me ever, I'm willing to stay after these meetings, you can also contact me at doldkay@gardencitymi.org, and I don't know if I have a phone number or not.
No.
No, we have no phone numbers, so email me or catch me here.
Now it's your personal phone number right now, if you'd like.
I think probably half of the community has my personal phone number, and that's okay, so that's all I had, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember DeMichael.
Thank you, Mayor Jacobs, I too wanted to discuss the GC Theater Program, so make sure you guys go and check that out at Christmas Carol, the new director over there, Mr. Alan Bennett, is just doing amazing things, and we couldn't ask for a better director to come in and fill that spot, so make sure you guys check that out, as well, to Millie Tiskowitz and her family, very sorry for your loss, you will be deeply missed in the community, also, an old neighbor of mine over on Whitby Street, Mr. Fernandez, has passed as well, my condolences go out to his family, the only other thing I had is that from the packet that we received that I asked for in reference to the Communications Department, I would like to know, Mayor Jacobs, when we can go ahead and schedule a closed session meeting for the council now to discuss the information that received from that packet after a council meeting.
Okay, I will, you can call for one if you'd like, I do have a comment, some comments at the end here, and you'll be able to comment then, and if you want to call for something, you can do that.
Okay, I'll wait for your comments, and then we can go ahead and go from there, that's all I have tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Witt.
Thank you, Mayor, my condolences to the family of Millie as well, I didn't get to know her as much, but I went to the library meetings for the past few months and got to talking with her a little bit, and she was a bright star in our community, and she's gonna be truly missed, I do want to thank Sergeant Stephen Miller, who was our contact for the Sandland Parade, he did a wonderful job coordinating with us, as well as Chief Gibbons, we appreciate all of your help, Brad and Steve from DPW for using the big vehicles to block off the road so we make sure all of the volunteers, entries, and bystanders watching the parade were safe during this time as well, and then all of my fellow Sandland Parade Committee members on the hours upon hours of work we did over the last six to nine months, and all of the volunteers, it's a very thankless job, and we appreciate every single one that came out and helped us on the day to make the parade a huge success, I believe it was the most attended in least at my memory, because there was a bunch of people all over the world, and we appreciate all the help to get the parade going, that's it.
Thank you. City Clerk, Mr. Miller.
I have nothing this evening.
Really? Thank you. I have a few things, first off, the Historical Museum again, Kim Marquette, they are doing, at the Hershey Shoe Stores, if anybody's ever been in there, they have the little wooden horse carousel, he is bidding that out, somebody can bid on it, so the Historical Museum would like to have the winning bid, which takes money, which they are taking donations for, so if you'd like to donate to them to help put in a winning bid, you can call Kim Marquette at 734-812-1559, it's 734-812-1559, and again, that's for the bid on the horse carousel that I was riding about 50 years ago.
You might want to say the reason that they're getting rid of that.
Well, yeah, they're getting rid of it, for those that don't know, Hershey's is closing for retirement sale, Tom, the owner, is moving up north, and he can't get anybody that wants to sell shoes, apparently Al Bundy retired also, and they can't, they have no one, so they're not closing due to business, he said they've actually been doing pretty good, but due to, due to the retirement, they're moving on, so I wish them luck. Another thing, the Flexmart, which is a shell station on Ford and Henry Ruff, if anybody has an electric vehicle, they do have two charging ports there, I think they're the only two that I know of at gas stations in the city, so anybody that needs those can use those at Ford and Henry Ruff. The parade, the tree lighting tonight, everything went great, weather cooperated, very, very nice, DDA always does a great job with the lights, and the parade was just fantastic, perfect weather and a lot of people, a lot of smiling kids. All our departments have been busy, so the DPW, on top of doing the parade and blocking off with all the vehicles, they also had a water main break that they worked on right after the parade for hours, so they enjoyed the parade for a little bit, and then they went back to work to fix a break, which took a little longer than they wanted, but they always do a great job. Our Police Department, they were busy, they had a wanted person that they, one of the officers spotted at Cherry Hill and Henry Ruff, the gas station, from the reports, they boxed him in, he was a rather large individual, and it took about four of them to subdue him after he did some damage with his vehicle, a couple of ours, but they did arrest him, and he is behind bars, so, great job by the PD, and there were no gunshots, as reported by some people, they did it all, no taser and no guns. Fire Department, firefighter Bernhardt and Captain Randy Keane, they delivered a baby girl in a house, and I heard six pop out, six pounds, and doing well, so congratulations to the Fire Department, everybody got into the spirit this year. Also, I am gonna start, and I'm in planning stages with administration, on having some Town Hall meetings after council meetings, probably starting about January, and it'll probably be every six to eight meetings, which is about every three months, once a quarter, somewhere in there, we'll see how it goes, and basically, it'll be less formal, just an open discussion with, you know, with some kind of rules, so it's not just a talking match, but just to get the, let the residents have time for a discussion and bring up questions, we're gonna try and figure it out so we can have, possibly, if there's a lot of questions about one topic or one department, that we might be able to have that department be present, that's in the planning stages how we're gonna do all that, but look for that, probably starting sometime in January at one of the council meetings, so hopefully that'll open up some lines of communications there. Last but not least, I wrote, I have a statement I wrote, and I'm just gonna read it, and then we'll probably discuss it, before we end this meeting, I would like to address the something that was brought up at the end of the October 10th, 2022 meeting, a council member requested some look into the handling of city personnel issues in the Communications Department, specifically who on city council knew about the issues and what they did about it, it is my understanding that city leadership had previously referred the investigation into the Michigan State Police, who have declined to further pursue a criminal investigation into the former members of the Communications Department, and declined to pursue a criminal investigation against any city officials, including council members, based on their handling of, based on their handling of the incident, in my mind, this resolves the unfortunate incident and allows us to move forward with doing the other important business of the city, given that the Michigan State Police have made, have been made aware of the handling of the incident and are not moving forward, I am satisfied that the matter is resolved, at this time, I will offer council an opportunity to speak, make any motion if they feel this matter needs to be discussed or dealt with any further, otherwise, I'm satisfied this matter can be concluded, I would say since the police don't want to pursue it, if we were to take it further, it would probably require hiring an attorney to redo the investigation, which would cost money, so at this time, I will open up to council if they have any comments or want to do anything.
Mayor.
Councilmember.
Yeah, I would like to, like I asked earlier, I would like to review that as a council, the packet together, when I had asked for that report to be completed, I didn't know if anybody knew anything that was on the current or the past council, I should say, with the information that we received, now knowing the information that I know, I do think that people need to be held accountable, and/or we need to address it together as a council on taking our oath and making sure that we are holding our integrity and doing what's best for the residents, so rather than having that in a public forum, I think that we should go ahead and have a closed meeting after council, which is why I requested to have that done earlier, so we can discuss it and where we want to go from there.
Mayor, are we allowed to discuss a public document in a closed session?
I don't, I don't think we would be allowed to.
I thought it was only two things.
It would have to be with a lawyer, client lawyer privilege that would call for the special, or the closed session, correct?
Well, as the, as the city clerk, we really, there are certain things that we can discuss in a closed session, certain things we should not, and this, I don't see that it would fit to go to the closed session, anything regarding the report, it's not pending litigation, we had, the city's not been sued, we've not chosen to sue anybody, there's no lawsuit going forward, it's not handling the disciplining of an employee, we're not purchasing any property, and we're not entering into negotiations for either land or for labor, so I don't think it fits the requirements for a closed session.
So then we could discuss this at this table or put this then on the next agenda, so I can be prepared to, with everything that I have and from the packet, to discuss it with council then, so that way the public knows?
Should be allowed.
Yes, by tomorrow at noon, if I receive a contact to have anything on the agenda, I can put it on or can go into other business.
Okay, and who holds us accountable, I just want to clarify, the only people that can hold us accountable as elected officials are the residents and ourselves, is that correct? Or Mayor Jacobs, I'm sorry, maybe you know that.
Not sure.
Who holds us accountable?
Ultimately, well, the voters ultimately, but we can hold ourselves, but about the only thing we could do if we found, I believe enough wrongdoing would be to censor a council member, which is basically just, you know, saying you did, you did wrong, as far as recall, voting in, voting out, not voting out, but, you know, not electing or re-electing whoever the case may be, that would just be the residents, our control is basically, we can censor, but that's, as far as I know, that's it, we can't remove a council member.
Right, I'm not, I'm not asking that, that's what I'm asking, is what we would do, and since you think that we should put this to bed, as you had stated, Mayor Jacobs, you're okay with everything that we've received in that packet, thinking that that's okay, and we're just gonna cover up with that with another cover-up and not letting that information get out there?
I don't think anything was covered up, the report, the report's out there, the city clerk has it, he has made it available, I believe it's FOIA request, right? You can get a FOIA request for it.
Requested through via FOIA.
Does that document also include confidential emails? It does, are we gonna talk about that at a public meeting?
That would be great, considering that other public emails have also been sent out as well.
It's a confidential email, though, part of the document you're referring to includes confidential emails that shouldn't have been made public.
Well, I guess if you want something on the agenda.
Yeah, I think there needs to be something on the agenda, I'd like to be prepared to have this and make things, I would like an answer as to why this was not brought to the appropriate people at the time, and how something like that could have happened, so I, yes, I would like to, I would like to put that on the agenda, I can get with you tomorrow, Mr. Miller, I would appreciate that.
Okay, I don't, I don't know that we have the power to make anybody, you can ask whatever questions you want, but you have no subpoena power, or, you know, any power to force any of us to say anything if we don't want to, I don't consider that covering up, it's, that's just the law, we can't, I can't.
But we did take an oath.
Okay.
When we owe the residents to hold to that, so that's where, I guess I'm just...
I can't, I, you or I or any other council member or anyone at this table can't compel anybody to say, you know, you're not, we're not under an oath like in court, so you're not gonna be able to say, you know, truthfully, beyond, you know, to the best of your knowledge, did you do this or that, and she doesn't, Councilmember Dolan on that point, but she doesn't have to, she would not have to answer, and so I don't know what answers we're gonna get, you know, individuals have been fired, they've lost, and I know people say, oh, he's around this and that, but he lost a lot of, a lot of years with the city, he gave up a lot, he made a mistake.
Choices have consequences.
You're right, and he paid his consequences, I'm willing to move on, I think it's, he's paid his price, he's, he's lost a lot, and so have the others, and I think, I personally feel, it's time to move on, let the man, I'm not gonna persecute him for life.
Not speaking of.
He made, he made a mistake, he paid for it, it's time to move on, and I'm pretty sure everybody in this room has made a mistake, I know I have, you know, I don't really need it held over my head for the rest of my life, so that's why I'm ready to put it to bed, the police have done their investigation, I'm satisfied with it, so, but if you'd like it on the agenda, they can put it on there, that's your right.
I'm sorry, it looks like you wanted to say something.
I think there's some confusion as to what she's asking for, she's not asking about the Communications Department, per se.
But it's all, it's all rolled into one, right?
No.
No?
Sure is.
Yes, it is, the report and everything was about the Communications Department.
Right.
So if she's asking for that to be on the agenda, that's part of the Communications Department.
I don't know how to clarify this.
But it'll be on the agenda, if she wants it on the agenda, it'll, it'll be on the agenda, and we can see where it goes from there.
Just one more question, Mayor Jacobs, you're okay with how that was handled? You're okay with how that was handled from the council member, you are okay with that, and it wasn't brought to the correct attention to the city manager or the former mayor, you are okay with that?
I'm okay with the investigation that was held and the report that was filed, that's what I'm okay with, it was investigated, it was reported, there's, I'm not sure where else you're gonna go with it.
Okay.
Okay. Having said all that, there's no further business, this meeting is adjourned.